Coming from your county commissioners, another piece of value added in snowing. For all those people out in Georgia County that are watching, the new commissioner channel.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on November 27th, 2016. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on November 29th, 2016.
Make the motion. Second.
Good morning. I am next, right?
You are next.
You are next. Okay. Today we have appropriation transfer from the contingency account for the wellness incentives to receive from, to be received from Subco from employee payouts this week. We have several appropriation transfers from various departments, including Building, Department of Clerk of Courts, Commissioners, Com and Police Court to fund final payrolls for the year. Appropriation transfers from Board of Elections and Engineer for year-end hospitalization waiver payments. Two supplemental appropriations for water resources for debt payments. We have a cash transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund for the 2016 funding, and a cash transfer to the general fund for the airport construction local match. Three travel encumbrances, one for engineer, one for JFS, one for Plaza. A purchase order for Southern Computer Warehouse in the amount of $11,607.6 for water resources for the lab computer equipment, and a payment of $15,950 to Georgia Mechanical for the courthouse annex rooftop air conditioning unit. Any questions?
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 16-160 heading through financials for the meeting on December 8th, 2016.
Second. Can I make that motion? Second.
And I am reporting on items I approved on December 2nd and December 7th as authorized by resolution 16-0107. On December 2nd, I accepted resignation of Charles Pataglia, part-time driver from Transit to be effective on November 23rd, 2016. On December 7th, for the airport authority, acknowledged and approved reimbursement number three for FAA grant project number 3-39-0054-018-2015, re-autelete terminal apron, phase two of two, in the amount of $5,365.34, FAA portion of $48.28, and $537.34 local match. Also acknowledged and approved reimbursement number three for FAA grant project number 3-39-0054-019-2016, construct taxi lanes, crack seal runway, design airfield lighting system, and Pappy on runway 29, in the amount of $37,256.10, FAA portion $36,594, and $622.10 local match.
As I was saying to people earlier, we always use blurs. My glasses up here. They're up there. I don't want to look at everybody.
See straight up.
The first item, which is the cancellation of the mortgage, is just, we had a five-year mortgage on the property, and the way that the state has placed the mortgage is that if they lived in the property for five years, the entire mortgage would be canceled. They didn't owe us any more. So I'm just asking for the mortgage to be canceled.
The office of Mimi and Ellen is requesting the board approve a piece of mortgage for Patrick Cameron Evelyn and Laurelland for property at 12075 Forest Wood Drive, New bury, as the mortgage in the original amount of $3,275 is no longer necessary to secure the county's interest under grant VC018262.
Second.
Commissioner's.
Right.
The next item, sorry to say, shouldn't have been placed for today, should have been placed for Tuesday because Lily is in training, so she's not able to be here.
Do you want me to pull it?
Please.
Okay.
Can you put it on for next Tuesday?
Yep.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So we're just taking the next one off?
Yep, we're just going to take it off.
That's good.
Thank you. Here it goes.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning. Okay. This is a request to hire, her name is Lily Anbasas. She's, well, it's a part-time position, but she's going to be strategically asset. She's retired from Warrensville Health and Health Center, so nothing phases her. She's, so she's going to be great, you know? We're going to be a walk in the park for her compared to what she's used to in her old job.
The county home is requesting the board hire, approve hiring Lily Anbasas to the position of part-time attendant number 1504-1 at the rate of $11.65 per hour with a one-year probationary period, which our unemployment is continued upon the successful completion of the required pre-deployment condition. And will that be effective December 12th, 2016?
Second.
Commissioner's.
Right.
Commissioner's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a safe. Snowing.
It's snowing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Flexible pavement.
Flexible pavement.
I was looking at that down in Columbus.
Yeah?
Yes, what's out there? Very curious about this whole concept of flexible.
Oh, the asphalt. I need more time. The item on the agenda today is for Mulberry Road. This is to execute the disbursement request from the Ohio Public Works for their portion of the project in the amount of $378,999.81. That's a one-time, that's a complete everything, so this one won't be coming back for, in the OPWC, it'll just be the final change order.
Want me to read it or no? The county commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an authorized call for unfulfilled board members to execute the House Public Works Commission Appendix Disbursement Request Form and Certification Number One, final, in order to release the bond from state portion of our OPWC grant for the asphalt resurfacing in Mulberry Road, C39, Section 22I in Chester and Monmouth County, pending on $378,999.81.
So.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Have.
Going to be a long one, I betcha.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, I'm good. The item we have here is just a payroll authorization to add more up to be able to sign off on the payroll every week. One of the issues we have is, Monday was a good example, it was payroll week, I wasn't here, I was in Columbus, Dave was in Columbus, so we had to rush to get everything done Friday. If there had been anything changes, luckily there weren't any changes over the weekend. If there had been changes, we wouldn't have been able to get it back until Wednesday, so this is authorized lower to be able to sign off on it.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the company's payroll authorization.
Someone? Second. You can be around for the chair?
Yeah.
I'm going to give you a call later.
Okay. Do you have those ballots at the thing there? Those test ballots? Yeah, they're right at the front office.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 16-1601 on the Christian Way, paper for his dedication and kind of the rest of Georgia County.
Someone? Second.
Commissioner's.
Right. I'm going to present this to him.
regarding some, some position with the home boonsman and.
Development coordinator, is that position?
Job description? Thanks for coming in, Dave. Oh, sure. So, the discussion is, has, you know, has been, we've basically been, you know, looking at some, some options, and actually, you know, Tim, if you wanted to also, you know, participate in this, more than welcome to, as far as, you know, just having some of the discussions of trying to get a person in place so that we would be able to have a, you know, a voice for both residents, a voice for business, a voice for just some of, you know, some of the development and, you know, continued growth for both residences and also for businesses that sometimes, I think, fall short on what the availabilities are of Georgia County to be able to facilitate certain things, and with the direction that we're looking to move forward with in 2017 and beyond, as far as the potential of having some special projects here in-house that we're looking to do with some potential growth positions, as far as some facilities that we're looking to possibly, you know, consolidate and grow and, you know, restructure, that there's just not, there's, there's a lot of responsibilities that a lot of the departments and departments heads have within those, the different, you know, departments such as building, planning, health department, you know, across the board, that we would want to be able to have somebody under the commissioner's hiring authority as, as the go-to person so that they would be able to facilitate a lot of this, to oversee a lot of this, and to have somebody that we would be able to find has experience, and experience in a lot of different things. Experience in, you know, the building field, experience in planning and zoning, experiencing in conservation, and, you know, we've had some people that have come forward just through, you know, last year, year and a half, that have expressed an interest in this, people that I've talked to, people that Skip has talked to, and, you know, I've had to sit down with Dave on this also, and I won't put words in your mouth, I could, I'll give you the fore too, of trying to explain a little bit too of some of the strategies and some of the hurdles that we all go through. And the other situation too is, is to be able to have somebody that can also work with Dave, as Dave is, you know, though he looks like he's 26, he's not, and, and, and there's going to be a point in time that if, if Dave were to, you know, win the lottery and call us and say, he's not going to be here tomorrow nor any point forward, we're kind of in a situation where we don't really have that experience and somebody in that to be able to just fall into place. So this, what I'd like to try to do is, Dave, go ahead and explain a little bit of your position too, and stuff that you, you feel that something like this would work.
There's no doubt that the demands are increasing, and with limited resources we have, to be very blunt about it, I need backup, I really do, and this takes time to develop and learn, you've got to experience it, really. And it's a multifaceted thing, as you noted. So I've been concerned actually for some time on this, and again, my, and it's a growing concern now, again, because the demands are, are growing, and I'm telling you, Karen and I give it 110% day in and day out, and try to run that like a well-oiled machine over there, take care of business, but there are some things that I think we are also, we should be looking at beyond just the data, the bigger picture at the county level, and, you know, with various reasons, again, just, we haven't been able to reach, and I think now, if commissioners want to go forward with something like this, this would be a great opportunity to move forward on some of these things, again, at our level, that we can do, particularly in the realm of economic development and marketing ourselves, and working with, working with those that are here and those that may want to come here, and helping to navigate all that, and actually getting people together at the table at the same time, and working through things. We had, we had something somewhat akin to this a few years back before, before you came on board here. We called it rapid response, at that time, rapid response team. Dave was on that. I thought it worked really well.
Right, but it was all, it was all people who had plenty of daily responsibilities, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a group of us who were interested in economic development, but, you know, that wasn't our primary focus, so that was probably the drawback, because you didn't have somebody who, that's the primary focus.
It was hit and miss, and we didn't have a regular schedule of meetings or anything like that, but I guess what I'm saying is, maybe if this position comes to fruition, that would be a point to really take on and carry through on, and I think we could really build on that. There's a lot to be said for that. There's a lot to be said for talking to people face to face, quite frankly. I really feel that way. Getting the job done in that fashion, people really appreciate that. When you walk out of the room, you know you've got, you've got agreement amongst the parties. So, not to belabor the point, but, you know, I'm not here to cry on your shoulder or anything like that, I'm just simply saying the thanks are the facts, and at least with regards to what I do, it's, it's becoming, it's becoming quite a challenge, I'll be diplomatic, to make it go, and, and here, again, it's a great, it's a great opportunity. I don't know what else to say. I truly feel it.
And that was one of the things, and I've discussed this with Tim as we were going through the election process too, as both of us being business people in the community, you know, talking to a lot of people, and we've, we've encountered a lot of this with business too, that sometimes they don't have a place, or they just, I think that we need to take this even a step further of actually marketing ourselves as Georgia County, what we have to offer. We want, you know, and, and this, you know, this, I never heard it stated like this, but it made a lot of sense, and it was, it was put very, very point blank and simple from Dave's words, where, where if we can create jobs, we can eliminate a lot of the problems that we have, and it's the truth, because if people have jobs, they're able to afford a living, they're able to afford a lifestyle, they're able to afford things, that we're being burdened with every day here, whether it's JFS, whether it's the jail, whether it's, you know, because people at the end of the day have to do something to try to survive, and too many times, they'll take the easier route of going in the wrong direction. So us having a stronger county and a stronger, in stronger communities, and continue to push for us to be able to build jobs, build manufacturing facilities, whatever the case may be, was said best, we will eliminate a lot of our problems if people are working. It's bottom line, you know? And, and I just, you know, I think it's a, I think we, you know, we need to, you know, 2017, I'm, I'm super excited, you know, to have, you know, Tim come on board as a, as a business guy, and, and, you know, I think that it's, it's going to be, it's, I'm energized because there's things that, when you're in, when you own your own business, you make your own payroll, you do your own, you know, make sure that your benefits are covered and everything else, and you've got to create that, you have a whole different appreciation and understanding of what day-to-day is, and, 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 you know, and that's, you know, very, very excited, but at the same time, I also understand that we, we don't have a lot of fat in, in our, in our, in our county, in our county, you know, organizations, we really don't, and, and, you know, I mean, perfect example, like Linda Brannie, she's doing, you know, archive, she's doing this, everybody's taken on doing more with less, and, and, you know, this is in a position that's going to be an absorbent amount of money, but it's going to give us that ability that, what could that small dollar produce big picture? And, and, and at the same time too, it's, it's like if you, if you, if you focus on too many things, you never focus on, on any of it because you're, you're not able to do it, and, and if we have somebody like this, especially with the project that potentially we have, that'll be a very, very large-scale project that we have been, as an individual county, potentially taken on in a long time, dollar-wise and involvement-wise, we need to have somebody. So I guess with that being said, is, you know, Tim, do you have anything that you would like to add, or would you want to say anything regarding this? You know, I, I, I think the, you know, without, just from an outside looking in, I mean, it sounds like, you know, if, with some of the new projects that are possibly coming up here in the future, you know, a liaison between, you know, some of these contractors and, and the commissioner's office, and all the departments, you know, that sounds like a good idea for sure, you know, without, I mean, do you have somebody in mind already? Or is this? You know, we've had a couple of different people we've looked at, and what I, what I would like to do today is, is I would like to ask to, to, to put a motion forward to think that Linda and Dave created a, a job description and, and to do a posting so that we can, you know, we can put it out there, and at the end of the day, you know, review what, what candidates we can, we can get, you know, and, and basically interview some people and make a decision on who would best suit the needs of the county and the needs and direction that we want to go with, and, you know, and I, I think that that would probably be something that we would like to do sooner than, than later, and I don't know what the timeframe is that we need to do to posting position, but obviously, Skip, if you wanted, you know, if you supported, supported the, the motion to, to post for this position, I know that, you know, we've got a description, we've got a posting that we could get together today for it, to fulfill that job description, or what your position is, if you feel that this is a good thing, a bad thing, or, you know, I'd like to hear that.
So, we have been bantering, and I've been talking to Dave about this, has been a concept that we've been talking about for some time, I'm in full support of the concept, by the way. Just this morning, I sat in on, on the discussion with economic development on a business down in Bainbridge, that we're, we, the taxpayers, are going to loan $200,000 to. Now, I had significant questions on that particular business, it's a high-risk business, and, you know, I, I have personal issues with government loaning money to private enterprise, but, and with my business background, looking at their cash flow, and looking at the economics of the whole thing and all that kind of stuff, I had other questions on it. But this is the sort of thing that if we could plan on a broader basis across the county, I think it would bring a lot of value to our county. Tim and I just got back from the Columbus Commissioners, County Commissioners Association meeting, and we had an opportunity to talk to a number of other counties on how they do things. Wayne County is one of the examples. The day after, I stayed down on Tuesday and had a conversation with the Northeastern Ohio Commissioners and various counties that are in Northeastern Ohio, to take a look at our common interest and what, what's working, what's not working. Interestingly, economic development came up, and airports came up, in the same conversation. Wayne County's Board of Economic Development and the airport board are married. It makes sense, because the airport is a contributor to the economic health of the Wayne County, and they're doing a pretty good job. So there's, I'll just use this as an opportunity to say that we're, we're signed up to host a, we in Portage County are signed up to host a number of counties to take a look at our detention center. We're still having, still doing some information gathering on the concept of being able to better utilize that facility, for Ross idea, or started a conversation, I'm continuing to do some homework on that. But coming back around to this particular topic, I think it's a good idea to put this ombudsman, and this position is going to evolve. There's a number of questions I have on the opportunities that we have here, one of which would have to do with the planning commission, whether or not we could, this person could sit on the planning commission and be one of the board members for the planning commission, this would make sense. So there's, there's a number of things that I think we need to kind of evolve in this whole thing, it's going to play itself out. We just recently became a sponsor for conservation easements in Ohio to give people an alternative. One of the people that we're looking at or talking to, or have, you know, at least expressed an interest, has a background in conservation easements. That would be a lot of value, because we don't have an engine set up, or we don't have a mechanism set up right now to go through the process. We've established, the fact that we're a sponsor, we've established an agent in the Soil and Water Department to go out and do that. not working. Interestingly, economic development came up, and airports came up, in the same conversation, Wayne County's Board of Economic Development and the airport board are married, it makes sense, because the airport is a contributor to the economic health of the Wayne County, and they're doing a pretty good job, so there's, I'll just use this as an opportunity to say that we're, we're signed up to host a, we in Portage County are signed up to host a number of counties to take a look at our detention center, we're still having, still doing some information gathering on the concept of being able to better utilize that facility, heard Ralph's idea, or started the conversation, I'm continuing to do some homework on that, but coming back around to this particular topic, I think it's a good idea to put this on buzzment, and this position is gonna evolve, there's a number of questions I have on the opportunities that we have here, one of which it would have to do with the planning commission, whether or not we could, this person could sit on the planning commission and be one of the board members for the planning commission, this would make sense, so there's a number of things that I think we need to kind of evolve in this whole thing, it's gonna play itself out, we just recently became a sponsor for conservation easements in Ohio to give people an alternative, one of the people that we're looking at or talking to, or have, you know, at least expressed an interest, has a background in conservation easements, that would be a lot of value, because we don't have an engine set up, or we don't have a mechanism set up right now to go through the process, we've established, the fact that we're a sponsor, we've established an agent in the Soil and Water Department to go on and do the work, but in terms of actually going through the process, it'd be nice to have somebody who had the background and experience to help us to navigate that. So, with that said, I would support a proposal to post this, I'm gonna go one step further. I would like to suggest that we go into executive session right now, because there's some related personnel topics that I'd like to bring up to you, Ralph, and to Tim, as the commissioner-elect, you're gonna be, being a part of this whole process going into next year, I'd like to have a brief conversation, fifteen minutes, with you guys about some things related to this, and get your take on it, and then we can come out and take action, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, so with that said, I'd like to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel-related matters.
Say, claimer of a Republican candidate.
Claimer of a Republican, that's right.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner's lawyer?
And I'd like to invite in Dave and Tim.
You want, how about Linda?
Um, no. Well, yes. Yes.
Hey, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, I appreciate you talking. And for the record, Dave and I had a conversation back from executive session. Now we are. We're back from executive session at ten six, according to the clock on the wall, and the action that I think we're gonna take is to go ahead and pass a resolution to post?
Well, we have, there's several actions.
Do we have a... All right, good.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the new position and job description for ob, buzzment and development coordinator, number one three two two, grade ten E, to be effective December eighth, two thousand and sixteen.
Someone, a second.
Commissioner's lawyer?
Aye.
Commissioner's clerk?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart to include the position of ob, buzzment and development coordinator, number one three two two, to be effective twelve eighth, two thousand and sixteen.
What's the date?
Today.
Someone, a second.
Commissioner's lawyer?
Aye.
Commissioner's clerk? Commissioner's office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of ob, why is that? [crosstalk 0:25:36].
I couldn't do that word.
Ob, buzzment, I have to work on that, ob, buzzment and development coordinator. Number one three two two, this position will remain posted until filled.
Someone, a second.
Commissioner's lawyer?
Aye.
Commissioner's clerk?
Okay.
We have two seats at the mental health board to fill, we have two resumes, or two resumes on the table, I don't recall the lady's name, but Brian Johnson was one of the guys who submitted, I'll raise that up for consideration, so we can take care of that, so let's start with Brian Johnson.
Do I make a motion to...
I want to move to appoint Brian Johnson to the mental health board. Someone, a second.
Except I don't have all the information, because this is only a short term, you're only appointing to fill the...
Unexpired.
Unexpired term of...
Chase Scott.
Person who left. Shay Scott, is that who?
Is that who you're gonna do, Shay Scott?
Whoever's got the longest term.
There was another one, I think Shay's was longer, I think Darlene Violetta's is the first one, and Shay's is actually longer, Darlene was up in seventeen, Shay was up in eighteen.
Right.
So I need to know which one you're actually...
Yeah, that was gonna be, I believe, for Chase Scott, it was the longer of the two terms.
So you're appointing Brian Johnson.
Yeah, and I'm gonna suggest for the, for the gal, because I can't remember her name either, it's been a while since I talked to her, and I don't think, Ralph, you talked to her yet?
No.
I'm gonna ask that you talk to her, and I'll give her a heads up that you're gonna call her.
Okay.
We don't have any responses to the posting, I must suggest maybe repost, because we have, we have some seats to fill there, in addition to that, I'm gonna give you a heads up, we have three seats on the planning commission to fill before the end of the year.
Okay.
And so I have reached out to a local attorney to ask her to submit her name, I think, having an attorney, particularly one who has experience relative to zoning and so forth, having an attorney on the board will be very helpful to everybody, and so hopefully she will accept, if not, I think we need to find a process or post, or seek interest anyway in the three seats, two of the people that are currently on there, I would probably be okay with, but would be nice to have some fresh...
So there's three vacancies right now, or there's three coming up?
Three coming up the end of December, so December thirty-first, Christine Pierce, Dave Short, and Marjorie Brabek are the three people that are coming up, now, we can reappoint them if they have interest, we'll have to check and see if they have interest, and/or replace them.
Okay.
And so, I'm just giving you a heads up on it, there's no particular action necessary today, I'm just giving you a heads up that that's coming up for awareness and perspective, and I did reach out to an attorney, since I'm very active in the planning commission, I reached out to an attorney to ask her if she had an interest, she's very active in the development area, she's got a lot of experience in zoning, she sits on a number of boards in the county, she's on the C I C, you know, just very rich in background, very energetic, she's already very much engaged, so I don't know if she'll take it or not, but she'd be a real valuable asset on the planning commission.
Okay, so you made the motion to appoint him?
Yes, I will make the motion to appoint him.
So, Commissioner's lawyer?
Aye.
And by the way, next week, we're gonna bring up Nuaca, that resolution, so we can vote it up and down.
Right.
Yes.
On that board composition.
And I did clarify that, what I said at the last meeting was, is that it does need the concurrence of all five of the counties in order for the ratification to take place.
Okay.
So we do have to submit an answer, one or the other.
We have a board meeting the following, or that week, so doing it next week would allow us to go to a board meeting, and let's present that, that'll be done, that's all said, and just to reinforce, I did commit us as the only representative from this organization on the Northeastern Ohio Commissioners Association to take part in a, an event at the Portage County facility for, of the county's commandancy, we have great facility.
Joint detention center, that's right.
I talked to the youth services director from the state of Ohio and a number of other counties relative to sharing of bed space and stuff, from what I hear, it's doable, whether or not it's something we want to do is a whole different matter, I also talked to Judge Berger, had a long conversation with him about the challenges with doing that, I talked to Grindell's office about the same topic and got their feedback on it, of course, they're very nervous about mixing crowds, and it looks like it all comes down to, the crux of it is, how much control really would we have if we put a contract in place, and I'm still doing some discovery on that to see if it makes sense or not, but there are counties that are doing it, Wayne County happens to be one, and so, you know, again, just because you're getting information doesn't mean you decide to act on it, but it's good to have the information, so I'm just making that, you know, raising that for awareness, that that's happening, so, we have a work session coming up, are we, do we need to shut this down?
We need to, okay, we're adjourned, then we'll start.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned, do we want to take a...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a few minutes.
A health break, and then go back.